Okay, Jeff Line.
Good afternoon.
We're calling roll, Jeff. Are you here?
I'm here virtually.
Okay, that's great. Ann Campbell, welcome.
Hey there. Good afternoon.
Hi. Well, Countess was here and Whitney, can you hear us now?
Yes, I can. Thank you.
And Whitney is here. So we have a full board and we have a quorum. With that, we'll move to the next item on the agenda, which is the approval of the agenda. I would entertain a motion for that.
Oh.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion is approved. Next item on the agenda is public comment. As I understand, we haven't had anyone signed up online and no one in the room. Is that correct? Okay. So, no public comment. Uh, and then we move on to the uh, item number five on the agenda, which is our reason for meeting today, and that is to consider an agreement with Foster Garvey to um undertake a review of the resolution with the City of Olympia regarding the Hands-on Children's Museum expansion. Um, at our last meeting, the board approved a motion to seek out um, legal counsel to do this review. And uh, thank you Troy, who has done some work to present us with Foster Garvey as a potential legal consultant on this. And I think everyone's had a chance to look at the letter that came from Stacy and I, what I'd like to do just at this point is to open it up to board to uh, or maybe I should ask Stacy, do you have any uh, anything you'd like to say before we open it up to questions and comments?
No, um, pleasure to be here. Mark Greeno, one of my partners here at Foster Garvey is also on um, this call, but not showing his face. And so um, we'd be happy to work with you. Again, I don't think it's in this letter, but we would charge hourly, but we would cap the fee, provided that it's just the review of um, a few documents and we don't have to necessarily give an opinion.
And you indicated that cap was at 5,000. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. So, questions, comments from the board?
I have questions.
Go ahead, David. Yes.
So um, Mr. Parsons seemed to have pulled back a curtain at the last meeting that I see perhaps even getting murkier. So I refer to the second paragraph under attorney-client relationship given to us by the Foster Garvey Law Firm, which I'm glad to see we have before us. So uh, I'll just read this just for my own sake. "We are not acting as the PFD's counsel with respect to the provisions of this letter, and to do so would be a conflict of interest. If the PFD wishes to seek advice from independent counsel of its choice about whether the PFD should agree to these terms, please do so." But friends, we're in a tautological situation. Hope you all know what a tautology. We can't do one thing because another thing is a paradox or contradictory. We're here with, to review bond counsel. But the bond counsel agreement, because Mr. Parsons pointed out at the last meeting, every party to the underlying agreement had counsel review. Except we didn't, which is why we're here today. Thank goodness for that. But um, and this is what I mean about how the situation to me seems to be getting murkier and murkier rather than clearer and clearer. I understand the logic of Foster Garvey stipulating that we, we can't, we can't give you counsel as to the appropriateness of this agreement. Your own counsel would do that. However, we don't have our own counsel to do, or we, or we would hire another firm to review the appropriateness of the agreement with Foster Garvey. This is what I mean when I say we're in a tautological situation. And uh, I'd like to see some resolution of this, or I'm going to step down from the board. Because I, I just don't find this to be a comfortable working environment. Uh, I have a whole host of questions. I'd like to see a copy of the RCW under which this, this board works. If there's an interlocal agreement between Tumwater and Olympia and Lacey, I'd like to see that agreement. Uh, I even have such foundational questions as the, the hourly rate or the 5,000 fee. That's fine. Who's gonna pay that? Is the City of Lacey going to pay that? So are we a part of the City of Lacey? Are we not a part of the City of Lacey? The, this is the range of concern I have about how this particular public body works. And uh, I'd, I'd like to furthermore, in addition to the RCW 3934 and 3557 and any interlocal agreement, I'd like to see the model of some other public facilities district and how they handle these issues. Because um, well, I'm just, I'm just speaking of tautologies. I'm just, I, I, I can only repeat myself at this point. I think our statutory and operating scenario was murky in the extreme. And I'd like to see significant clarification of our status in public law before we proceed any further. Less than I can be satisfied otherwise in today's meeting as to the inappropriateness of my concerns. Well, I have some input, some comments on that. So as far as who pays, the, we would pay. We, we have funds and that would come out of the funds that would be available for the two projects. So it would come, we collect the money. We give money to the, to the two projects. We would have to pull out $5,000 to pay this bill, just like we do to pay our insurance each year that we pull that out. So that's how that works. I, 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 I think I hear you loud and clear, and I think that we have to do a better job when we bring people onto this board to have an orientation session to go through how this all works. They spent, they, the cities of Lacey, Tumwater and Olympia and the county, Thurston County, spent years putting together this organization so that it would function, that we wouldn't have to spend a lot of administrative money. Um, and, and they did that on purpose to try to keep it functional, provide some oversight with this board, provide oversight, and yet not spend a lot of administrative money by setting up some full-time staff. And that, and that Lacey, Olympia at one time provided staff and now Lacey is providing staff. And so I, 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 I understand, I hear you loud and clear about the orientation. We do have interlocal agreements. We've, we've had an amendment to it. We have in the past looked at hiring attorneys for certain things. And so I, I get it that you're not on board with those issues. My concern is that we didn't ask to have legal review of the entire document. We asked to have review to protect our board members and to protect the district from having any liability uh, for payment. And that's, that's what I thought our directive was. It wasn't to review the entire document for the benefit, because it's really not a benefit to for us or against us. It's a benefit for or against Hands-on Museum. We're simply facilitating how it happens and make sure that this board and these board members are protected. I thought that was our directive.
Yes.
And so if that was our directive, we don't need them to, to tell us whether the whole process is, is, is proper. And so um, I hope we can continue because I, I think this is, and I, and I also think we ought to immediately put together an orientation to bring all the new members up to speed, including review of all those documents. And maybe have some members from one or more of the um, principals. And so I would hope that we could keep this moving so that we are facilitating the Hands-on Museum as long as it has no impact on this, these board members and this board of this. I just, my, our concern, my concern that I raised was I want to be sure that we are protected for any, any um, blowback. So if, if for some reason um, they don't perform either the bond company or Hands-on Museum, that it doesn't come back to the, this board or these individuals. So that was.
Great. And, and I understand that perfectly, Ken. I, I appreciate your response. But just to elaborate on my, my concern here, uh, if that were we, we've had successive meetings. Well, and if it, it's because of the attorney-client relationship agreement before. This is the second consecutive meeting where the issue of, of who's guy, who's providing the provincial professional legal counsel to the Public Facilities District Board. You raised it the last time.
Yeah.
And now our, and in, and in constructive response to that, we have the Foster Garvey firm here before us and we can proceed into that discussion certainly. But, but they themselves in their own agreement with us tell us, this is our proposal. But if, but if you want some legal review as to the appropriateness of the agreement you have in front of you for bond counsel, you should seek some other legal recourse. And that, I'm just, I'm just saying, my friends, that's a tautology. We've got to get out of this loop. Either one of these jurisdictions quote unquote owns us in terms of our staffing and legal responsibilities, or they don't. And if one doesn't, then I think we should have our own staff and, and resolve this question once and for all.
We, I don't believe we need our own staff. And I think if you read the, and, and went through the history of the interlocal agreements and with the cities, you'd under, you'd agree. That, I'm not, I, I'm in agreement that if we have a legal issue, it is our responsibility to go hire our own attorney and have it done. We were trying, again, I think it wasn't about the appropriateness of the agreement. It was whether we were protected if something failed. That's what, what, that's what our directive was. If it's the appropriateness of the agreement, we, we didn't try to re, try to recruit a, a counsel for that purpose. And so I, I thought it was well, I told you what I, what I thought it was. So.
Gentlemen, can I interrupt for a minute? Because I have a couple of members online. Put your hands up. Um, uh, I don't know who went first, but Jeff, uh, could you go ahead, please?
Anne's, Anne's hand was up first. So Anne, go ahead.
Anne, go ahead, please. You're muted.
Thank you very much. Since we're on a Zoom call, the Zoom call should say hand one, hand two um, on the administrator thing as an FYI. Um, having been privy to local governments and bond issuances for more than 18 years, uh, the uh, uh, lack of um, or the, the, not lack of, but rather the um, stats of the law firm makes perfect sense. A bond issuance attorney is who is going to do the opinion on things on the appropriateness of the bond offering. Um, and if anyone is curious about where public facilities districts were first created, I would recommend going to the Municipal Research Services Corporation's website. And it has a lovely overview about all of the uh, uh, public entities, public legal entities. And PFDs were created under 35.57 RCW. Uh, the interlocal agreements are also on the MRSC website uh, as well. Um, I don't have any concerns whatsoever about the statement in the law firm's offer and proposal. That seems absolutely normal to me. Um, so I am prepared to move this along uh, once we get uh, comfort in the concerns that have been addressed.
Jeff?
Uh, I, I would state similar to Anne that this, what we've been presented is what we asked for. We asked for uh, this group to come in and essentially evaluate. And they did without opinion or will potentially without opinion. They're, they're, they're doing what we asked them to do. I think being that this is the second meeting that seems to be a pretty critical meeting that I've uh, joined now in less than two or three weeks uh, with the board. I do agree and highly recommend. It seems like there's a knowledge gap here um, that is potentially causing some discomfort of, I'll say it myself as well, but I, I can kind of at least understand what we're doing and why we're doing it. But I think um, I think the bigger issue here is you do have people that have been brought on board that other than their own reading and their own time to do, they, they really weren't onboarded properly, my opinion. And I think that's causing the, the discomfort. But back to my initial statement and supporting what Anne said. I'm comfortable with the document. I'm comfortable with the proposal. It's what we asked them to do. If we wish something different, then we need to rephrase it and we need to find someone else to do it. But they are doing and proposing exactly what we asked them to do, and I'm comfortable with that as it stands. But again, I'll just close with really onboarding is an issue, in my opinion. I think you have some, I don't know the history of anyone else on the board. Clearly, there's a knowledge gap, myself included, and I think it would behoove us to solve that ASAP so that others are comfortable joining uh, and participating appropriately uh, for the community. So, thank you.
Thank you, Jeff and Anne. Uh, Chris, do you have any thoughts?
I think Ken stated it. My feelings exactly. So.
Jay.
For the benefit of, uh, and I'm sorry, who's Ken? Which one's Ken? I'm sorry. Ken, thank you. Okay. I just want to make sure I understood who you're agreeing with. That's all. Thank you.
Good. Uh, my main comment is David's absolutely right. I, my thought had been that we'd do an orientation at our annual meeting in November. We clearly have so many new members and new issues and a lack of uh, orientation that's needed sooner than later. Um, my commitment to the board is that we will arrange a, an orientation session of some nature. I don't know if it'll be in, how, I'm not sure what format it will take, but my commitment as a president of the board is to um, address all the issues that David has raised regarding um, all the underpinnings and under infrastructure of this PFD so that everyone is up to speed on its history, uh, the interlocal agreements, the RCWs, um, revenues and how it all works so that um, people are operating from a basis of knowledge about what we're all about. That being said, what's the pleasure of the board?
I move to approve the proposal.
I second it. Moved by Jeff, seconded by uh, Mr. Parsons that the um, agreement with Foster Garvey be approved. The PFD is, do I have this right, Jeff? I think the I think what we want is to authorize the PFD to enter into the agreement with Foster Garvey to provide the legal review.
Uh, so agreed and amended. I, I, I move that we agree to that and move into this arrangement. Yes.
My second admit that.
Okay.
Discussion?
Discussion.
Is the first item of work or A item of work of our uh, new council to be a further review of, of what was attached Exhibit A, form of financing agreement? Is that kind of the, is that the arena of their work, basically?
I, I think the, I think that if I understood the motion made at the last meeting, correct me if I'm wrong, uh, that, that, that we were engaging Foster Garvey to, to review the proposed resolution and agreement with the City of Olympia.
And that is exhibit, that is Exhibit A that was attached, form of financing agreement?
I have to pull up my, make sure I'm answering your question.
Because I have some other questions on that form, but I don't know, if this is my only shot, I don't know whether to bring them up now or wait until we've contracted with Foster Garvey and then bring them up then. I'm just trying to be economical with everyone's time. I want to bring something up prematurely.
I believe what we're asking Foster Garvey to do is to review Resolution 25 dash 01. Is that? Am I correct in that?
But, but what is the form and substance of that resolution, Mr. Chairman?
Sorry, I don't understand your question, David.
Well, wha- what is the substance of that resolution? The res- the resolution is not the agreement that's before us.
No.
Twenty, that the, what, what is subsumed under that other resolution? Does that include Exhibit A, form of financing agreement?
Maybe I'm not looking at the right materials. I'm.
Was my understanding.
Go ahead, Stacy.
That it would be the resolution and the financing agreement attached.
That is, that's your arena, so to speak, that agreement.
We have worked um, with other PFDs on, as bond counsel. So again, a little bit different role here, but yes, we have looked at these before.
Well, I guess the particular problem I'm trying to resolve, and I'm trying to be difficult, trust me. I have questions about Exhibit A. My question is, should I raise them now or should I bring them back to a subsequent meeting that we have with Foster Garvey? That, at root is my question. Jeff has also raised his hand too.
May I clarify? I'm not seeing an Exhibit A. I see three meeting files. I see a draft special counsel engagement letter, which was what, with the motion that Anne. I see Resolution 2501 uh, presented previously. And then I see three hands-on expansion presented previously. I, help me where Exhibit A is, because maybe I'm not, not seeing the exhibit you're referring to.
Well, I asked the City of Lacey, because I don't like to print out meeting materials at my own expense. I asked them to print out the attachments. And they printed out Exhibit A in this meeting packet. It includes the Hands-on Museum prospectus. It includes the Foster Garvey letter. And this is a financing agreement between the City of Olympia and the Capital Area Regional Public Facilities District for the Hands-on Children's Museum Expansion Project. That is what I have attached to my meeting packet.
So when I looked at um, your meeting agenda, it's under number two. So it currently lists number two, Resolution 2501, present, presented previously. And if you scroll through those 17 pages, um, the Exhibit A that I believe you're talking about is included in that document.
Okay. I think what I'm seeing, Dave, I, I think I see now, there is an over, there's an overarching item A that is, that is titled authorizing the agreement with Foster Garvey to conduct this review. And under Exhibit A, there are three documents. Document one is the draft engagement letter with Foster Garvey, which the motion is to approve.
Correct.
And the second document is the, essentially the document that we are asking Foster Garvey to review, which is what came before us at the last meeting, in which we said we don't, we need to have counsel review that.
Otherwise known as the financing agreement.
It's, it has, it has two parts to it. Um, there's, there's a resolution that begins it. Resolution 25 dash 01.
I don't have that.
Okay, that precedes the second part of that document, which is the finance agreement that you're looking at, Dave.
And page, that's page five of the PDF. So if you go to the actual attached document, it's page, excuse me, page five of the PDF, which is probably where the confusion is coming in. One through four of 2501 is the resolution itself. Then page five, page five is essentially a base page, Exhibit A, and that has your form of financing agreement. And that essentially is the remainder of the PDF document, which I, sounds like they may have only printed you Exhibit A down and maybe not page one through four.
Uh, thank you, Jeff. That clarifies what I have and what you all have. So.
Okay.
But that begs my question, which is should I raise any questions about that document now or later when we are under contract with the law firm we're about to adopt as bond counsel?
My view would be, and I welcome other comment, my would, view would be if we have questions, comments, and guidance for Foster Garvey regarding their review, this might be the time to bring that to their attention.
Okay, and if I might, I have three. Um, on page six, uh, section 10, it refers to the city, and I think by definition, we're talking about the City of Olympia now, shall be primarily responsible for the locating. Now, it doesn't say solely responsible. It says primarily responsible. So if there's any subsidiary factors or players, uh, I'm, I'm just wondering whether those ought to be identified. So that's, that's issue number one. On page eight, section 16, the infamous indemnity and hold harmless provision, which we discussed at length at the last meeting, and which I think the City of Olympia's bond counsel noted in session that she had made a change to reflect the dialogue on that occasion. What I have before me is the preceding original version that was of concern to several of us that does not reflect the changes made in session at the last meeting, specifically being the issue that the, the district is being held harmless. But it refers vaguely to officials, elected officials. There are no elected officials on this board. It refers to officers. We have officers, two of them at least. We have no employees or agents. But there's half a dozen board members who are not called out specifically by class as being indemnified. So either uh, I misread or misunderstood what was conveyed verbally by the City of Olympia's counsel last time, or I just simply got a, I got a print of an outdated version of the uh, financing agreement. In any case, the final version of this document should hold, indemnify and hold harmless the members of the board of this district. Lastly, yes.
Sorry to interrupt. I, I thought you were finished, but the, yes, the amendment, the motion that this board made adopting that resolution did include the amendment to include the word board members within that indemnifying section.
Okay.
So apologize that we didn't have the right attachments in there.
Um, and then lastly, and this is the big one, the overarching one, not necessarily more significant. Uh, I'd like someone, I don't know if it's the City of Lacey, if it's the City of Olympia, uh, if it's, I, I don't think it's our bond counsel, which may make my next and last comment extraneous. But I'd like to know what's implied by the iteration of notices in section 18. It's the district, care of the president, Capital Area Regional Public Facilities District, City of Lacey, address, et cetera. Um, so what's implied in that iteration? It's an open-ended question. What's implied by that? Are we, what's our relationship to the City of Lacey? And this might get back to the orientation, the interlocal agreement, my naivete as a, and I'm glad someone made the point, I think it was you, Jeff, that we were not properly onboarded. I sincerely attest to that. I've been on this board for over a year and a half and have still not had an orientation. Somebody is responsible for that, and it's not me or the members of this public facilities district. That's all I have to offer.
There's no comments.
Okay, I, I have one, Anne. Forgive me, I didn't print out all my documents. I thought, I thought this was just approving the agreement. And I thought that it was just approved, authorizing that agreement, which we were clear, I thought we were clear that the agreement was to hire Foster Garvey, knowing that they may be um, they wouldn't be a, a, a totally separate firm for us. But just to make sure that the, the Public Facilities District and that we individuals are protected. I, 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 I wasn't trying, I, I don't think we're trying to protect Hands-on Museum or Lacey or Olympia or anybody else. I think we're trying to protect the, make sure that nothing can come back to the individuals or this board or this entity. That's why I thought we were hiring for the review. And I didn't see that in the write-up of the proposal. It was standard verbiage about, yeah, we'll look this thing over and make sure it smells right. But that, I'm interested in making sure that nothing can come back to the public facilities district or the individuals. That's what I, that's what I thought I requested on that motion.
Anne? Go ahead, Anne.
I was just going to ask that in future, when amendments have been made to a proposal that included in the meeting package is a redlined version as well as the final version, assuming that the red line is approved. Uh, so that we can definitely see where the amendments or exclusions have been incorporated into the documents. And the language that is in there regarding indemnification is pretty much standard boilerplate that I have seen in my 18 And the language that is in there regarding indemnification is pretty much standard boilerplate that I have seen in my 18 years. I am not concerned about personal liability on this.
Right.
Perhaps I could help in terms of our understanding of what the agreement was intended to, to be. So I believe the second action this board took at the last meeting included a review specifically of Section 16, which was the indemnification section. So perhaps I have a question for Stacy as well in terms of making sure we understand what's going to be included in this review. But that specifically, I think, I hope addresses Treasurer Parsons' question about protecting and not having any liability upon the board members. So I, I think it captures that, but again, maybe I'll defer to, to Stacy to make sure that my understanding or what I stated is accurate.
Go ahead, Stacy.
I'm sorry, try in terms of the current language that's in there now or just kind of our review. And, and we can definitely do that review. Obviously we would want to see the latest version of the agreement.
Sure. Yeah. So I think in terms of that specific section, we want to make sure that this board and its members are protected in any actions in terms of personal actions due to the, to the bond issuance by Olympia. So we could certainly get that, you know, final document to you. And I believe that Olympia's bond counsel plans to send you the version, the corrected version upon the agreement being approved.
Be great.
Does that cover what you were?
That, that covers exactly what I was asking for. I mean, like, like Anne, I'm not overly concerned. But when we had the discussion last meeting, it was to review, I think it's Section 16, and make sure that we're all protected. So.
Are there additional comments, questions? And I will call for a vote. All those in favor approving Jeff's motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
I'd like to record, indicate that I'm abstaining from this vote.
Mr. DeCandry is abstaining in the vote. The motion is adopted. And with that, I believe our business is concluded unless there's anything else to come before the board.
Oh, hey folks, this is Mark Reno from Foster Garvey. I just wanted to say just two things. First, we, we very much appreciate your, your placing your trust in our firm. We've done lots of work with PFDs for the years. And the, the, the PFD has a statewide association. It's having a conference in Wenatchee later this month. I know that's short notice, but they do, they do gather each year to try and discuss issues of interest to all of the PFDs in the state. And if you'd like information on that conference, I'm, I'm happy to forward it. And, and also if you're having an onboarding or orientation sec, session, we, we, we do a lot of training with, you know, new, new officials that are serving in board capacities. And we're happy to, we're happy to come alongside and help you out with all of those matters as well.
That's very much appreciated.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you so much.
That's great. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. And thanks for being here. Thank you, Stacy, for joining us. Great to see our new board members. Welcome in.
I would like information on the, the gathering.
Yeah, me too.
Yeah, Angie Hong, well, I'll do one other thing. Angie Hong from Commerce, who's our contact for the financial feasibility review. Also mentioned that the last time I talked to her.
Yeah, Angie, Angie usually comes every year as well. I often make a presentation on, on finance matters. The, the, the association's lobbyist that works to extend the state sales tax credit on behalf of the members appears. And then we, we usually have, you know, folks that are, that are showcasing their, their particular facilities. You know, PFDs are arranged in various different ways. There's no, there's no one model for them across the state. So it's, I think it's very, very helpful. And we have a new, kind of a newly invigorated person who wants to get the association involved with as many members as possible over in Richland. So I think that you'll see more activity from the association going forward.
Richland or Wenatchee, Mark? I thought you said Wenatchee earlier.
Yeah, the, 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 the location of the conference this year is in Wenatchee. But the, the person who is kind of spearheading and energizing the association is in Richland.
Okay, thank you.
We'll get some more information on that. Thank you. Good. Thanks so much to everyone for being here and all your, your comments. Much appreciated. I think it's worth having these discussions. And with that, I will say the meeting is adjourned at 1:37.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.